Okay, good afternoon, welcome. Today is Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. We have two work sessions scheduled for this afternoon. The first one is a work session regarding oil and gas, air quality, and affordable housing funding. My name is John Kafalas, Commissioner from District One, joined by my Commissioner colleagues, Kristin Stevens from District Two, and Jody Shadak McNally from District Three. I will turn it over to Leslie, who can introduce herself.
Okay, I will introduce myself really quickly, and then Laura can introduce herself, and then we'll get going. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director.
And I am Laura Walker, the Human and Economic Health Director for the county.
So we'll kind of-
One moment, please. I just want to acknowledge, before we continue, our county manager is also joining us, Loretta Volker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Laura and I will share this participation. I'll get us going, and then hand it off to her, and we'll kind of hand it back and forth through various sections. So we're happy to be here to have a conversation with you this afternoon about a mix of possible projects that could be funded through some excess oil and gas revenue, related revenue. And it's just an opportunity to really start to talk about a variety of projects. We have in your packet and on the screen here, we have 10 different projects that relate to housing affordability, oil and gas compliance, and air quality implementation, or projects to achieve better air quality. And so what we'll do is just walk you through each one and give you a sense of what the project is, what kind of research and analysis has been done so far by staff, what some of the benefits may be. And then we'll close, really, with a conversation around which ones seem interesting or appealing to you. Should we narrow the list a bit? Are there some other ideas you'd like us to explore? And then we can start to move forward with some conversation around next steps for funding certain projects. So with that, the first batch of projects relates to affordable housing. So I'll pass the baton over to Laura, so she can walk you through those.
Great, thank you. Once again, Laura Walker, Human and Economic Health Director. And so for the options that are being proposed to the board today, and additional information provided, I have my subject matter experts from our Public Health Department, our Public Health Director, and our Environmental Health Director are here with us in the audience, as well as our Housing Stability Program Manager. So if there are more details than what I have on the slides here that are needed to be covered, I'll ask those folks to come up to the table and assist me with a little bit more detail. So I'm going to move to the narrative description. So you saw the chart, as Leslie pointed out, that lists all 10 of the options that we're bringing to the board today for consideration. And then we have a slide for each of those 10 items to give you a little more narrative context about what it would mean. And so with affordable housing, the first option that we're providing today is around eviction prevention. And so this would be taking investments that were already approved in the 2024 budget through a service proposal that was presented to the board during that process, and extend the amount of time that we could offer to residents of unincorporated Laramo County eviction prevention assistance funding. And so this would take us out starting in 2025, because 2024 is already covered for these services for this population, and then also for '27 and through to '29. So you can see there, the three different dollar amounts is taking it through the end of '26. The second dollar amount would be to take it through the end of '27, and all the way through the end of 2029 would be the total amount that you see there, the third option. So hopefully, that's clear. If there are any questions about how the slide is formatted, please let me know.
Thank you, Laura. Colleagues, do you have any questions at this time? I think we're good to continue.
Okay, thank you. The second option for affordable housing supports would be, again, extension of a program that has already been funded for 2024. And that is to provide legal assistance to people that are facing potential eviction. Because as we know, both with the prior slide talking about providing some supports to pay people's rent so that they aren't evicted for a short period of time, we also know that legal issues between tenants and landlords can sometimes be resolved in a different way that would also prevent eviction of the tenant. And keeping people in affordable housing is far less expensive than putting people that have lost their housing back in to some kind of an affordable housing situation. So you can see here, taking the program all the way through 2026 would be a $300,000 investment, and another $150,000 on top of that if we took it to the end of 2027. And this is a contract that we hold currently with Colorado Poverty Law Project to provide these services free of charge to the tenants that need them.
Yes, Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah, I have a question about how many people would, between those two programs that you listed, the eviction protection and the legal assistance, how many, do we know how many residents we would be helping?
I'm going to ask our Housing Stability Program Manager to help us with the detail on that.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Aleah Rodriguez, and the Housing Stability Program Manager. The previous slide with the eviction prevention, the 275 annually, it depends on, it's case by case who would be helped. But the idea is helping up to $1,000 per household. So 275 minus the administrative costs, you're going to see, you know. Sorry, don't have my math with me.
No, sorry, I'm asking you to do like back-of-the-hub of math here.
That's okay. No, 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 it's okay. I should know the answer to that question, so.
But when you mentioned, if I may, when you mentioned the 275, that's what we recently approved-
Correct.
-for this year for emergency rent assistance.
Yes, that contract was just signed. And so this is suggesting an extension of that program, so further assisting every year for the next few years. I don't have a number for the legal assistance, Colorado Poverty Law Project, but they did, they had reported out last year how many were assisted, so I can get that number, and so go back to you for sure.
Yeah, no worries. I don't need it.
Or I could even look it up and-
I don't need it today. I just, you know, just for curiosity's sake, as we're kind of looking how to spend these dollars, you know, the bang for the buck kind of situation. Okay. Return on investment, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to move to the next slide, if that's all right. If that works. Great. So we've talked to this board several times. Mostly Aleah has brought this notion to the board in a number of different settings, but the Safe Park Program, which is an allowance for those people who are experiencing homelessness but yet still have a working vehicle to be able to park in a place overnight, sleep safely, and have access to restroom facilities and the like, and also get some case management assistance. And so this would be providing funding to a community agency that would do the coordination and the actual operation of a Safe Park Program in certain parts of the county.
Thank you, Laura. It appears that Commissioner Shadak McNally has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to be clear about that. Is this the one that I have witnessed, where certain churches are allowing a limited number? Is it the Safe Park Program that I, I have pictures that they're allowing, and the churches are helping and facilitating that? Is that the same program, or is that something different?
That is, it's a very similar program. I don't know if it's run by the same organization that would potentially be serving outside of Loveland, but-
So Loveland has started a Safe Park Program. I believe there's about five churches involved. It's not officially part of Safe Park that is located in Denver, like the organization Safe Park, but it is a Safe Park Program. This funding would be to hire a coordinator who would help expand that throughout Laramo County, not just within Loveland.
Okay. My church is one of those churches. So I just happened to walk up and go, whoa. This is great. I guess I haven't been paying it as much attention as I should. So I asked a lot of questions. So this would be something above and different with the actual name of the program. And I have a picture. It's a different name, I have a certain name. They had the signs. There's like, looks like there's a name, so that's why.
The group of churches who have started in Loveland have given themselves kind of a coalition name.
Okay.
It's very, very grassroots, early stages.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
So before we continue, Loretta has a question or a comment.
So I'm wondering, I saw on the chart, the estimate for this looks like it's $200,000. And it says two years. Is it $200,000 that would cover both years, or $200,000 each year?
That's $200,000 that would cover both years. And that was based off reaching out to current service providers around what it would cost to hire staff to extend this program.
So are you imagining, I know we have embedded these ideas, these are really just ideas for you all to think about, but are you envisioning that would be a county staff person, or that we would pay an organization to help support a person to do this work over time? Is that the proposal?
Yes, that it would not be a county position. It would be an RFP out to the organizations that are doing this work similar, and have case managers who would take, use these funds to expand.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer your questions, Loretta? Great. Please continue, Ms. Walker, Laura.
Thank you. And so the next option for affordable housing supports is the notion of a land bank, which we have been discussing with the board over several years as well for potential investment by the county. And so hopefully, this isn't news to any of the Commissioners, but there would be an advisory committee that would be established that would investigate the opportunities of land purchases to then hold those properties until such time as either if they were in a growth management area or outside of that, that the infrastructure of the nearest municipality had extended to the point that the infrastructure was then more readily available to those properties, to then be able to work with developers to hopefully put affordable housing on those parcels of land. It's really timely as well with the passage of Prop 123 that happened statewide, that this could also be used as matching funds in order to leverage what the resources are from Prop 123, so that this would be a combined effort between those state resources and local resources, so.
Thank you. Questions or comments, colleagues? I have one. My question is, has there been any kind of preliminary assessment of properties, lands, that would be appropriate for this type of work? And related to that, would it just be in growth management areas? Or, you know, we have more challenges in, you know, purely unincorporated. So any preliminary analysis of, are there properties out there that might fit the bill? And is it just GMAs, or perhaps beyond that?
I do believe that there are properties out there that would fit into the land bank. Since the county has had these conversations, there's been inquiries even of land that's available in unincorporated Laramo County. It's a long-term solution, you know, capturing that land now until services expand out to that area.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you remind us, when we, about two years ago, we went through that exercise of strategies and prioritizing, and we had staff do this, and also us. Wasn't this a highly recommended staff strategy? Would you remind us of that, of the land banking?
Yes, land banking was one of the strategies presented, I believe, in 2021. And it was one of the top priorities as we worked through those strategies as well. It was in the top five.
Thank you. I just wanted to refresh my brain. Thank you.
Please continue. And I'd like to do a time check. Leslie, Laura, what's your sense of how we're progressing? Because we certainly want to make sure that we can have a conversation about the air quality.
Yeah, we certainly had more affordable housing options than any of the other categories. So I'm hopeful that if I can get quickly through this last one, that we should have sufficient time to get to the ones regarding oil and gas and air quality.
And still have a little bit of dialogue on the housing.
Correct.
Very good. I'm glad that you're hopeful. That's important. Please continue.
Thank you. So our final option being presented today around affordable housing is to look at gap financing. And so there, again, I think this has come through Aleah's exposure in this network of developers and housing providers and advocates for affordable housing. But there have also been some specific inquiries, too, about whether or not the county has funding that could potentially assist. We did have an ARPA grant, if you recall, that was recently approved. That's the American Rescue Plan Act dollars to support a gap that was being experienced by one of the developers at the Hartside Hill complex to get them to the point that they had enough capital to be able to then qualify for other funding. So that would be a similar, a very recent example of what this kind of funding could do. So it would be a set-aside pot of money that could be used for those type of situations to keep a development project on track that maybe had a smaller gap in funding that would take them to the next level and make them eligible for other funding streams. And again, this would also help us with the Prop 123 requirements that if we are participating in that program, that we continue to see, year over year, a 3% increase in the total amount of affordable housing units available in our community.
Thank you, Laura. Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, because we have had a lot of projects come forward, and we've had a lot of, you know, through our experience, ARPA requests, do we have, they're all worthy, and they're all important, but do we have any criteria or some guidance so that we're applying the same kind of process to all requests? So we're kind of looking at each, I mean, each project is unique, but kind of have a kind of a set of standards for some of these projects, so at least they meet certain criteria, et cetera? Does that make sense?
So my recommendation from the staff level, if we were going to create a program like this one, that we would have written protocols and written policies to guide that. We have not had that with the American Rescue Plan Act funds, because all of the opportunities have been so different from one another that I think it would have been difficult. Maybe in hindsight, it would have been better if we would have had at least a written framework of some kind from the beginning. But as you know, there's been a lot of variety and a lot of asks from a lot of different corners for those ARPA funds. So we maybe missed the mark a little bit on having written protocols. But if we were to implement a program like this, we would have those.
Thank you. Are there other aspects of your presentation, or is this the time when we can offer questions?
I think questions are fine, or if we want to go to the oil and gas options.
Well, I think I'd like to just finish up a little bit on the housing. And I may have a couple of questions. But colleagues, do you have any overall questions, comments, observations on this affordable housing? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions, because we have seen a lot of these ideas before. So I think that there's, you offered us a really good suite of what we can choose from. I mean, I don't imagine today we're going to be deciding anything, but it's good to have, you know, these ideas in our, you know, in our thoughts as we kind of go forward and think about how we want to spend these dollars. So I appreciate that. And I think these are all really great ideas. And certainly, you know, housing is something, there again, that we hear from our community time and time again that we need to fix. So I think it's good to have some opportunities. And I think there's some great opportunities. And I like the ones that, you know, leverage other dollars, too, or help us get to those 123 goals. So thank you for presenting these.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shadak McNally, any questions, comments, observations?
I'll make a quick comment. I appreciate Aleah, and you, Lauren, and all the other folks who've been working in the housing space. We have certainly been an active, engaged member at the table, per se. And I really appreciate you being an ear and also representing us so well and making sure that we're hearing these conversations. I actually had just a phone call earlier today with some Loveland City Council members that mentioned the county's been at the table, and your name came up. So I appreciate knowing that. And I just, I know you are looking for any and all ways we can leverage our resources and our collaboration to kind of help address these needs. And I just want to express my gratitude to you both, because this is certainly a hot topic. And I echo Commissioner Stevens. I wouldn't say hot topic. It's a need. But this is very much in the forefront. When I say hot topic, it means everyone's talking about this. There's a lot of the housing bills, and there's lots happening in this space. But this is really about, you know, families and students, and people like my children who are like leaving college and trying to figure out if they'll ever be able to own a home and be able to afford, you know, even a one-bedroom apartment, which has been a challenge. So I just want to say thank you for the work. And I really especially appreciate looking for ways we can leverage the money to make our money do more work. So I really appreciate those points that you added. So thank you.
I have two questions, and also gratitude for the holistic picture that is taken, the expertise that you bring to our team. So thank you for all of that. My two questions are as follows. Remind us again, where is this money coming from to consider these projects, these proposals? And is there enough money to do all of them? And then I have a second question.
I can answer that for you.
I was going to point to the county managers.
I apologize for being late to the meeting. I got held up in the hallway. I was going to frame up the conversation by saying we have more requests than we have funding available. Also, the Budget Office reminds us that we can't count on this additional funding year over year. This is, this could be one-time funding. We should probably look at it like one-time funding. But there are more requests and greater magnitude of need than we have additional funding available. You might recall, this is the funding that was additional oil and gas-related funding. You all decided to do a $5.5 million temporary mill levy credit. Because that didn't help renters, it only helped homeowners paying property tax, you all said, "We'd love to have ideas on how to support people who don't own a home, who are renting and live in our community in a different way." And because it came from oil and gas, air quality and oil and gas measures, which Leslie will talk to you about, are sort of the other tier of options we have. And we're hoping today you'll help us narrow down that you'd like to know more about a handful of these that staff can really go back and dig into, and then bring back to you at another work session for further refinement and identification.
Thank you, Loretta. That's very helpful. So a follow-up to that clarification would be, you know, what are the next steps? I don't know if we've provided enough direction today, you know, to start that process of refinement. So I don't know if you have any thoughts there as far as next steps. But then my other question that I was going to ask Laura and Aleah, with the understanding that Laramo County has opted in to Proposition 123, the reference to Prop 123, and the comment about leveraging funds, how would these investments help us to leverage state funds through the Prop 123? And might that be a criterion that we ought to use as we're trying, if we can't do it all, to try to make some informed decisions? I piled in a few things, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So with the two different options that relate to Proposition 123 and are, having opted in as a county, the land banking option would provide us a way to apply for additional funds to help us purchase land, because the monies that we would put forward from the county's coffers would be seen as matching funds, which are required in order for us to make a request to get additional dollars from the Prop 123 bucket that's held at the state level. So it would help us purchase land.
I believe you said two projects?
Uh huh. And the second one, having the gap funding for affordable housing projects, it would allow us to have more developers produce affordable housing units, which gets us towards the required annual increase of our affordable housing stock by 3% year over year. So anything that we do that results in more units being available in our county provides us that reach to get to the 3% that we are required if we're going to remain opted in.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my questions. And do you feel like you have, I mean, we haven't really said of these items, which ones we should focus on. Do you feel like you have enough direction so we can have our next conversation?
I would say that unless there's something out of the affordable housing options that the Commissioners are not interested in having more discussion about or considering further, because this has been part of the strategic plan for the last five years, and we've had numerous conversations, I believe that we don't need to do more refinement at the staff level in order to implement any of these things if they were to be approved. I don't know if that's true for the oil and gas and air quality, but for the affordable housing projects, I would say so.
I wonder if, as we get through the entire work session, maybe a way to follow up might be for each of you individually to reply to me with kind of which ones you're interested in, and that would help us. You could take a little more time. You don't have to decide today on the spot. This is the first time you're seeing these as compared to each other. And then I can speak with each of you individually about where we find a lot of commonality.
Great. I think that's a good strategy. Thank you, Loretta, and thank you, colleagues. Let's move on to oil and gas and air quality.
Okay. Leslie Ellis, again. I will cover the next two oil and gas topics, and then turn it back over to Laura and her team. So like Laura, I have a team behind me who helped with this. And Matt Sura, who wasn't able to be here today, but our special counsel, also helped put together some information for these two projects, potential projects for oil and gas compliance. So the first one, finding and fixing pipeline leaks. This is a topic where the funding basically would go towards supporting additional consulting or counsel from Mr. Sura to represent the county in a PUC, Public Utilities Commission, process around advanced leak detection rulemaking to really be a leader in this space in an area that hasn't really effectively enforced safety requirements for the past five years. There's quite a track record of not holding operators to accountability to address their safety issues, and quite a non-compliance track record. So there's an opportunity now to work with the PUC on this rulemaking. And that's something that the county could really take some leadership in, potentially work, you know, with some other partners on, but basically start to do some work in that area. You can see here, the cost would be about $15,000 for that representation. And I think this is potentially a good opportunity to really contribute towards some, you know, better compliance and some of our environmental goals around that, too. So, yes.
Commissioner, you have a question?
I'm sorry to ask one so early on, but I literally like half an hour ago testified on the pipeline leak bill. And so, does, I mean, are we trying to do something beyond that bill? Or are we trying to, you know, can you just explain sort of what that might look like for the $15,000?
Yeah, and I can follow up with additional information from Matt Surra, too. But the way he's framed it is now Rebecca White, who's the new appointed PUC director, has committed to, you know, doing some reformations and working on pipeline safety. And so she announced as a first step that there's this advanced leak detection technology rulemaking. And so it would be through that process that the county would be contributing. And that's where there's an opportunity to, it sounds like, make, you know, kind of make some headway on compliance. There were 94%, you know, instances of operator non-compliance in the last five years, that they're just such a terrible track record, that it's really an area where there's a lot of room to make some improvements.
And just to jump in and then maybe Commissioner, because I was going to ask something related to that. The bill in reference, I think, is House Bill 1357. And maybe when you're asking Matt for further clarification, I wonder if the consulting work that he would offer with these funds, is it predicated on the passage of this bill and therefore we would be at the table for the rulemaking part of the process? Or if this bill, for some reason, doesn't pass, there's still more work that needs to be done, if that's helpful? Yes, please, I'm sorry.
I can actually, like, I can kind of comment just briefly. I mean, and I don't know the whole answer, but because I just sat through two hours of testimony, including Rebecca being on that testimony, and I know her from CDOT, so it was funny to see her in a different role. But anyway, I think there are some federal standards that are being looked at simultaneously that mirror some of the suggestions that are in this bill. And so I think that, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that further. Commissioner Shadak McNally?
I wasn't able to participate today, but I was listening in. And I think this is a really important place for us to step in and help make sure we have a local government role and voice in this. And I think because there's a lot happening in this space, I think this is really important. And 1357 is a step forward, but as I understand it, even if that doesn't go forward, there's still lots of avenues that we could, this would be able to help us kind of look at the enforcement of what is already in place. And so I think either way, there's opportunities for us to help with, as you said, the track record right now with even enforcement of that is, looks like it needs some, so either way between, no matter whether this bill passes or not, there's work to do here either way. Would that be a correct statement?
I believe so, yes. And I will definitely follow up with Matt to get more information on the relationship with the state legislation.
Excellent. Good discussion. Please proceed.
Okay. So the next item, this one is a little bit broader, but you've had conversations with Matt Surra in the past about opportunities around orphan wells and plugging wells. And there is an opportunity to potentially put some money in reserve to support these efforts going forward. The work at the state level has, there has been progress being made, but it's been slow. And I think the county could be in a position with partners to do more in the space and help supplement the funds and help support plugging wells. And so that's, I think, something that could help us greatly, you know, achieve facility compliance with some of the local operators. We know we have about 100 out of about 243 that potentially are in that kind of category, and it could help us greatly with some of our air quality and soil and groundwater pollution avoidance and goals. And also potentially the ability to work with some of our partners, like the City of Fort Collins, City of Loveland, some of the other municipalities.
Loretta, please.
You all have expressed interest in this before, when Matt's come and talked to you about maybe permanently, more permanently solving some of these issues, especially related to wells that are near communities and housing. And so this was sort of a no-brainer to offer as an option, one-time funding, when it's gone, it's gone. But this is the kind of thing that you all have heard about and have been interested in before.
Thank you. You suggested this was a no-brainer?
To ask, to offer as an option, not to do.
Think anything around here was a no-brainer. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. I have to say, when I saw the number there, I'm hoping that's just the bare minimum, because to me, that seemed like 100,000 would be a drop in the bucket for maybe some of these needs. I know it can't solve, I know one operator has like 19 wells that we think that have not, they're just sitting there doing nothing. I don't, I don't want to sub, you know, they should be responsible for their cleanup, but I know there's some areas, especially with groundwater and things, and even soil, that just seems like a low number to me. And I'm just curious about where, how that number got achieved. I'm not being critical, I'm just, just knowing some of the stuff and research I've been doing, I'm just like, wow. I'm just curious about that.
Well, notice the plus behind the number. So really, this could be a number that ranges anywhere from 100,000 at a minimum up to a million, and it really costs anywhere between $30,000 to $60,000 to plug any given well. So that can be scaled at a level, I think, that makes sense for the amount of impact that you're looking to achieve. And then so much of it really depends on the specific incidences with the different operators, too.
I think the other concern is, too big of a fund will not incentivize well owners to control and manage their own cleanup. And so it feels like this should be a very selective process for those kind of things. And so we thought this number was a good starting point.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I thought that, too. I mean, we don't want to, we want to incentivize them to be partners, but also, and my thoughts are, this could be if we had an emergency situation where some water quality or was threatened or, you know, this might be something we immediately could use to help clean up something related. Or let's say there's an accident or something and we have a plume and we need to use, I don't know, I just, I'm just thinking out loud that, to me, there's a lot of work to do in this space. And you're right, I completely agree with your point. At the same time, I want to make sure that if the health and safety of someone needs immediate attention, we'd have something to help maybe address that. So just my thoughts on that, just kind of, I don't know. But I agree with your point. Thank you.
So as a reminder, we have a work session at 2:30. My goal as the facilitator of this meeting would be to end at 2:25, so we have a five-minute transition period. I do not want to diminish the next category of potential air quality projects, but I just want us to keep that in mind, please.
Yes, and I have nothing more on this topic unless you do, so I can pass it along to Laura to talk about air quality.
Great, thank you. So we have three options to offer in this work session around air quality. The first is around commercial landscaping and the use of gas-powered equipment by those operators. And so the Regional Air Quality Council has incentives, and the partnership between themselves and the Laramie County Department of Health and Environment has offered that program to incentivize residential property owners to swap out their gas-powered equipment for more sustainable and less emission-generating equipment. And so this is a recommendation that would allow some additional funding to include commercial operators with the same type of equipment that isn't doing so well for our environment, to give them the same incentives that we currently give to residential owners through that program. And that is a price tag of $55,000. And I believe that that's an annual cost.
Why don't we have Chris come on up?
Chris Manley come up to help me with this, please?
Absolutely. Provide a few details. Thank you, Chris.
Hi, I'm Chris Manley, the Environmental Health Director. Yeah, that would be an annual cost. One of the things we did when we initially started working with the RAC, the Regional Air Quality Council, was look at these swap programs and really, how could we pivot from residential into commercial? And this would be, in a way, kind of a pilot to get into that space.
Questions or comments, colleagues? Very quickly, Chris, the proposed dollar amount, is there any sense of how many commercial landscaping businesses could be impacted?
Yeah, we've consulted with Boulder County. Boulder County has started a very similar program. And so that number came from really meetings with them on what they saw in the first year and the dollar amounts that they had selected as kind of initial, again, an initial pilot of that program. So dollar amounts, what we have heard from Boulder is they were seeing somewhere in the 3,000 to 5,000 per commercial landscaper as a rebate amount. So again, this kind of got that, gets that ball rolling and gets us started.
Thank you, sir. Continue there, Laura.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Sir.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, so I'm on the Regional Air Quality Commission, and so this is a program that we administer. And I will say, there's almost never enough dollars to be able to, I mean, there's more requests for these dollars than there are dollars. And so I think it's a really, I think I would recommend it as a good investment. And also, I mean, there's statistics like, if you mow your lawn for an hour, that's the equivalent of driving 300 miles in your car, because they just don't have the emission controls in these kind of smaller motors that you would in an automobile. And so it really does, they really do make a difference. And especially since they're used often in the summer, when we do have those high ozone days. So just wanted to put in that little plug. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Please continue, Laura.
Thank you. So the second option we are presenting around air quality improvement, as the board knows, we've made great strides in the last year anyway on having additional equipment in our county to do air quality monitoring in different sites around the county. And so this proposal would be to add more of that equipment, to have more robust data gathering at the sites that we currently have. I believe it's also to provide an additional location of monitoring, or is it just to add equipment to the existing locations? Thank you, Mr. Manley. I was conferring with him. He's our expert here. And so for $135,000, that is the recommendation here, I believe this would be a one-time cost, if I'm reading this correctly. And that would be to add canisters to the existing sites that, again, would have more robust data gathering for us on the volatile organic compound VOC problem that we see coming through those test stations, those quality stations currently. So better data.
I have a question. Could you elaborate a little bit more on the better data? I understand that by putting out the canister sampling technology, Colorado State University would collaborate with us to analyze. And what would we be learning from that data regarding precursors and nitrogen oxides? And based on the location, Timnith and Loveland, would that help us to better understand regional air sheds and the implications of all that? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the addition here, the enhancement is really to give us the ability, again, in partnership with Colorado State University, to do some speciation of those volatile organic compounds. So that lets us determine the source. So is that, are we seeing those volatile organic compounds from transportation-related sources? Are they oil and gas-related sources? That's something we've heard our community ask, where we'd like to know more about the source of those. So that's primarily what this equipment would do.
One quick follow-up question, contradicting what I said earlier about moving along, but with this increased capacity to do further analysis, would it help us, the work that we're doing with the AQMAC regarding, looking at, and maybe you could help with that acronym, I'm hoping you can, regarding, understanding better any potential disproportionate impacts on, you know, certain communities and all that?
Yeah, potentially. You know, I would say that the two are different and separate and distinct projects, for sure. I don't know that there's a whole lot of overlap between the two projects. You know, one, this proposal is really getting to that speciation and source of volatile organic compounds, where the other project you referenced, the EPA three-year project, is at the neighborhood and community level. What are the sources of air toxics in that community and where are they coming from?
And can you help us with the acronym? Air Quality Monitoring?
The M is, I'm lost on the M, but it's Air Quality Advisory Committee is the last two, and I'm.
Could M be Monitoring?
Yeah, the M flew out of my head, but yeah.
Perhaps it's Monitoring.
It might be, yeah.
Although we can go with that for now. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions. Let's continue, please.
Okay. So our final recommendation for funding around air quality improvement is a public information campaign, which is ideally suited to be produced by our Public Health Department, just so that there's better information being provided to the public, particularly around the data that we are now able to get and maybe enhanced data, as was just described in the last option, so that folks understand how they can be more aware of air quality and how it affects their health and the health of their family, but also how can they play their part in mitigating some of the effects that we see, and maybe referring people back again to the residential, you know, lawn mowing equipment program that get more people participating in that as well, having people be more cognizant of how their driving patterns and choices around that are affecting air quality. But that would be a one-time investment, and that one was slated at $30,000 as an estimate. And that's all we had for air quality.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you, Chris. I think this is, we have certainly an opportunity to have some dialogue. Commissioner Shadak McNally, would you like to begin?
I just have a quick question, then I guess I can start the dialogue, sir. I'm just curious about the air quality awareness campaign and education. Would that include some, I'm sorry, Mr. Manley, or who would like to answer that? I'm just curious about, what does that look like? Would that be making videos and some other things? I know when I mentioned, some people saw the presentation we had where they, you guys used the FLIR camera to do the gassing, how it escapes when you're gassing your car. That caught attention of some folks in my district that say, are you going to do something like that? I think that's great. And so I'm curious, is this, what would that all involve?
Yeah, it would be a build upon that. You know, we did those initial videos, which I think are great, by the way, but we did them with a cellphone out, you know, in a parking lot. So this would be an enhancement upon that, a little more production value. And really, we wanted to try to get to those local impacts that everybody can make that do impact air quality, and try to really highlight things like the gas station video that we made. But again, a little bit better quality of that.
And to build upon that, if I might, Mr. Chair, and then I'll start the deliberation. We have lots of different audiences. We have older folks, like I'm thinking about my mother, who's not tech savvy, and then we have our youth that have lots of different ways they commute or travel. My children are always teaching me new things. And I'm wondering if we're also looking at maybe having this education campaign be multifaceted to reach out to those different community demographics who have different ways of maybe learning, like a video that would be more on, I won't say the other word, but like Instagram or something, and then older adults, maybe something that could be shown at some of the advocacy groups. I'm just, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, because I know people are interested in this, but I know they have different ways of thinking about it.
Yeah, I know we've had some preliminary discussions about it, and the idea, at least, that's been communicated to me is kind of a whole suite. So some longer length where we're going in depth on some of those issues, and then some short social media-type things based on the same. So yeah, I think that's what you're asking. It wouldn't be one product, we are talking about multiple with this.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for answering my questions. So, Mr. Chair, I'll just quickly go through my deliberations. I really appreciate everyone's having this opportunity to present this suite of options. I know that these are, I think it's really important that we emphasize these are one-time funds. And I always look for opportunities where we can use our, especially one-time funds, to be able to leverage for maximizing or doubling our funding. We've done that in broadband, we've done that in other areas, and I think that's really important to think about that. We have, these are both pressing needs, air quality and air quality, health and the health of our community is, we're entering in high ozone season. This is an important area. If you want to reflect back to our Climate Smart presentations, it showed the reddest areas in the state where our counties for the impacts of climate and air quality coming up for the summer, and that's heavy on my mind. We also have a housing crisis, and that's not, we're not alone. We have that throughout the state and throughout the country. And I feel that that's something also pressing. This money, as we said, came from an unexpected one-time oil and gas revenue that, for me, gives us an opportunity to mitigate some of the consequences of that. So obviously, I'm leaning towards the oil and gas facility compliance and the air quality improvements. And I also feel like there's some really strong things in the supporting housing, so I'd like to see how we can achieve all of it and hit certain gaps. So there are some things in here I appreciate you bringing together and the numbers, and I see some really things that I feel like we could do a lot of great good for our communities with this one-time opportunity. And I think I'll leave that there, because I'm going, as Loretta said, maybe I'll just reach out to her, my favorites. But I do thank you for a very well-done presentation and the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Stevens, thoughts?
Yeah, so a couple thoughts, and I know we're looking at the time, and I'm going to give myself two minutes. I'm just going to say that the Regional Air Quality Commission already has a lot of materials, so I think we could potentially build off that for any kind of public awareness campaign. A lot of their materials are distributed and done in the Denver area, because Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Coalition of Governments, puts a lot of money into the RAC, and so they, so, you know, their stuff goes on their media, on TV, and in papers, and all kinds of things. But there could be an opportunity to expand that into Northern Colorado. So I think, you know, before we recreate the wheel, I would say, let's kind of see what kind of resources they have. They also have things translated into Spanish. They also have things translated into Spanish, so that's good, they've already done that work. I think about Shift Your Ride, which I think is a program that I think the MPO ran, but also maybe City of Fort Collins, and so that's another good. So I'm thinking, like, you know, it would be great to have some of the municipalities participate in some of this outreach, and and could, you know, we get more bang for our buck if we sort of share those, the, the costs of doing some public outreach in that space. But I, but I think that there, like I said, I think there's materials already there and programs that are already started, so I think if we piggyback off that, that would, that would be helpful, and probably we'd get more mileage out of the dollars that we have for that. And then, yeah, I guess, you know, I like a lot of these ideas. I'm not, I, I do want it to kind of sink in for a bit, so I'm not, you know, I don't want to commit to anything yet, but I think that there's some great ideas here, and this is exactly what we wanted to see, is what we could do. The only other idea that I would have around air quality is that there is a program that Dr. Cog does and minister, I think, that helps people, if your car doesn't pass emissions and you can't afford to fix it, there's, there's funds that can help you fix your car, because otherwise, people might just drive a car that is emitting. So that can be an equity issue as well for people, and so think, you know, thinking maybe about what that might look like, and if we could put some funds into a program like that, where it's, you know, helping people get their car up to speed so they, they're not driving a car that's, and they're not bearing that expense, which can be really expensive to fix, an older car that is emitting. So I don't know, maybe we can find some more information, either from the RAC or Dr. Cog about that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I'll offer my thoughts, and hopefully there's time for, to hear from our county manager. So as has been stated, all of these items on the housing front and on the oil and gas and air quality front are all important. I think some things to keep in mind, one is, you know, the sources of money, and we've identified the primary source of money, but I would welcome our budget people to be as creative as we can be, to see if there might be some other appropriate sources of money to allow us to consider perhaps more of these projects. I think the point, I believe that Commissioner Stevens made is important, and on the public education outreach, you know, it's important that we not, quote, reinvent the wheel, and I'm sure we'd want to do a Larimer County version, but I'm, I suspect there's a lot of resources out there that might help with that, that might help reduce that particular budget item, that $30,000 or whatever we had considered, if we're having to adjust dollars. And all of that said, if I were today to prioritize on the air quality side, my first choice would be the additional monitoring, second would be the commercial landscaping, certainly the public outreach, and on the, on the oil and gas, I, my next thought would be on the participating in the policymaking, the rulemaking, and also the plugging. So, I mean, that's an order of preference. And on the housing, I, I think it's important on the Prop 123 leveraging, and that seems to speak to the gap financing and the, you know, the land bank, but at the same time, are there things that we can do that might have a more immediate impact? So I think I need to certainly think about all of that. That's all I have to say. I hope that's helpful. I appreciate that a couple of you are taking notes. Let's see. Loretta?
I'll just wrap up by saying I'm glad this is a difficult decision, because that means that staff has given you the kind of ideas you were hoping for. I'm sorry that we don't have enough funds at hand to do everything, but I do think these are really well-thought-out, well-vetted ideas that are realistic, that we could actually do. And so I look forward to talking more with you about it. We'll get feedback to staff on what you need a little more depth on, what you'd like to see a little more information about, and we'll continue to whittle these down so that you all can make a decision in the next couple of months.
So you'll be reaching out to each of us individually to have a little more conversation?
Yes, I will.
Wonderful. I believe we've had a good discussion. You've done an exemplary job, as you folks always do, and at 2:25 PM, almost 2:26, we are adjourned. We have approximately four minutes to get up and stretch. Thank you.